Well, we'll see what phase one is.
It has interrupted my retreat. But it's kind of going over again. I don't plan on doing this again. I hope I don't plan on doing this again.
I tried to quickly break down some of the bases. We're still, you know, because our vice chief of staff is in.
Ask them if you have any answers.
Welcome, everyone. Before we begin our meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Carlos Graham, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, I ask that you continue to have your hands on this city and that you provide this council and mayor with the vision and wisdom to continue to guide Jefferson City in the right direction. Lord, I ask that you speak to us in many ways so that we can make decisions to help make lives better in our community. Teach us and show us that it's not about Republican, Democrat, or Independent, but it's about doing what is right. Lord, I pray that we as leaders standing here tonight continue to do what is best for all people. Bless our public safety and first responders and their families. Lord, I ask that you dispatch your angel of protection around them and this city. I ask a special prayer for all those who are affected by the tornadoes in Alabama. Help them to understand during these difficult times that you are still in control. Lord, I pray for the safety of our country. I ask that you bless the soldiers that stand in harm's way each and every day to help ensure our freedom and safety. In your heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, March 4th, 2019 City Council meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
I'll entertain an adoption of agenda adding item Resolution 201833 to Item 7. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, we have no miscellaneous agenda items, no public hearings, and no appointments this evening, so we'll move on to Item 7, which is presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, and we will take up Resolution 201833.
A resolution authorizing support of a steamboat museum.
All right, and we have with us this evening Mr. Bob Pretty, if you'd like to come to the podium, and Mr. Ryan Moleman is our staff liaison on this particular bill.
Yes, I'll yield my time to Mr. Pretty.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Pretty. We're glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for this resolution that I understand you're probably going to narrowly approve a little bit later this evening. Let me give you a little update of what's been going on.
Do you want to pull the mic up? Pull the mic up. There you go. Thank you.
Is this better? All right, thank you. Let me give you a little update of what's been going on, or catch you up to date on really what's been happening for the last year. It was been, it's been seventeen days from today. I got back from a meeting in Kansas City at the Steamboat Arabia Museum where David Hawley, the president of the museum and one of the people who dug up the Arabia in 1988, was talking about the future of the museum and its possible future location because Kansas City doesn't seem to be making any great overtures to keep it, and his dream of expanding it into a National Steamboat Museum. And as we were talking about that, it occurred to me that this would be an ideal thing to go with our prison redevelopment effort, and so I drove back that night, and as I drove back, I thought, you know, this would be a great, great thing to have on Miners Hill, which is the hill just east of the penitentiary, and I very quickly went to work on that. So seventeen days from today is the one-year anniversary of coming back from Kansas City with that information. That night, I sent the mayor an email, and it said something to the effect of, I don't suppose Jefferson City would be interested in having one of the state's great museums move here. And she didn't answer right away, but that was late enough. She was probably asleep, and so the next morning, she quickly sent me a message that said, we need to have coffee together. And so the next morning, which as I recall was a blustery, misty, cold, gray, nasty day, she had coffee and I had iced, and I had hot chocolate, and we talked about this, and I told her about what we'd been doing in Kansas City. And when we got done, she uttered five words that really set this whole thing in motion. She said, it has to be here. And so that encouraged me to go out and start talking to other people. Sam Bushman the next day, soon after that Randy Allen at the Chamber, who said the prospects left him tingling. The mayor and I went to see Diane Gillespie at the C V B, and she quickly got on board. I asked the director of the State Museum to join us because I thought it was important we have somebody with museum experience. Councilman, Councilman Schreiber attended some of our meetings, especially one last summer where David Hawley of the museum and another person from the museum came down, and we looked up and inspected the site, and of course, Mark was a key figure in talking about a lot of things that could go on in the history of that area. So we had a working group that Randy Allen quickly dubbed the Maltera Working Group, which is a blend of Malta and Arabia because there is a second steamboat that is involved here that the folks hope to dig up perhaps as early as this next winter called the Malta that sank in 1841 near Malta Bend, and if that boat is, as the test borings indicate, complete enough, we'll bring up the entire boat, and if we're able to get the legislation passed that we're working on now to build the museum, we'll open a museum with an 1841 steamboat in it. As it is, right now, we know that we'll have the cargo from it. So late in the year, we decided, our working group decided, the casino industry would be the likely financial partners for us, whether they liked it or not, because the casino industry has capitalized on our steamboat heritage in Missouri, and all of us are old enough to remember when they first came into Missouri and said, we want to put casinos in, and the whole campaign was focused on creating images of steamboats going up and down our rivers and people gambling on them and having food and maybe sitting up on the upper deck, watching the scenery go by and having a nice peaceful evening, and shortly after the election, all of that went away. And we have now boats in moats. In the last 25 years, these casinos have had adjusted gross receipts of $33 billion. We think the industry can afford to help us build this museum. We contacted Mike Bernskeiter and Dave Griffith, two of our new Jefferson City legislators, and as soon as they were sworn in, they started work on drafting legislation, and the bills have been introduced. We had a hearing before the Senate Economic Development Committee last week. We had some questions that were asked of us and pointed out some problems we had with the bill that we have now already taken steps to patch and take care of. Earlier this afternoon, I met with Mike Bernskeiter's office, his chief of staff, with some proposed language that we think will take care of some of the questions that people had about the bill. The casinos did not disappoint us at the hearing. They naturally came out in strong opposition to what we're trying to do. They're opposed to anything that increases anything they have to pay the state, and our proposal is that they add a dollar to the $2 admission fee that they pay the state. This is not something they charge the people to go into the casinos, as many of you, as any of you know who have been to casinos, you're not charging any money to go in. They simply pay the state $2 for the time that you're there, every two hours or so, and they calculate that as the admission fee, and then they pay that to the state. We've asked for a dollar on top of that to finance our proposals. There are four, there are four things we want to do. First of all, we want to make sure this museum stays in Missouri. There's a well-financed and very good museum in Pittsburgh that would like to buy the entire collection and move it to Pennsylvania because that's where the boats were built. Second, we want to keep that from happening. We want to keep it in Missouri. This is our history. This is our river. These boats lived and died here, and we want to keep them here. We need to build a National Steamboat Museum in Jefferson City, opening in 2026, which will be the bicentennial year that we became the state capital. The second, the third goal is to answer a 90-year-old dream of every person who's ever directed the state museum, and they all have said, we need to have a separate museum building because the facilities of the Capitol are not big enough to tell our story, the story of our people or our resources. And fourth, then we turn the existing state museum area into a large visitor center and a Capitol history museum that talks about the history of the Capitol and state government. Although the strongly, casinos have strongly objected to our plans, I have yet to hear any of the 50 or so members of the legislature I've talked to express any concern that we are mistreating them with this, with this offer. So that's what we need to accomplish, but we need a lot of help to make it happen. It occurs to us, we need to mobilize our city and we need to mobilize our county, and that's why we're asking you tonight to pass this resolution that is going to be before you. It calls for everybody in town who has any contact with members of the legislature, state employees, landlords, food and beverage service people, people who sell them tires, people who sell them coats, rent tuxedos, whatever, anything, anybody who has contact with these people, this resolution encourages them to whisper in their ear how important this project will be to our town. It is something great for our city to have, and it is something that will help make our city even greater. So we need everybody to convince our lawmakers to vote for the boats, and I suppose signs and windows and cash registers might help. I suggested that to Randy at the Chamber of Commerce today, but voices in people's ears will carry an awful lot of weight. We're putting our best effort forward, but if the museum does wind up in some other city, history still wins because this stays in Missouri, but we want it here. We want it here very badly for everything that it can bring to our city and everything it can mean to our town. It'll make our city greater. It'll be greater for the, for the people of the state of Missouri. And so we are the only city of those that have expressed an interest to put forth a financial plan that not only builds a museum, but has the finances to continue to operate it without any tax increases, without any demands on general revenue from the state because the state doesn't have anything, any general revenue to speak of, to play with right now. So what we're trying to do for our city is a pretty bold step, and it takes a lot of effort and a lot of people to help us make it happen, and I appreciate the support that I think you're going to be giving us tonight with this resolution. And Mayor, if you or any members of the council have any questions, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Thank you, Mr. Pretty, for your efforts working on this for the past year and bringing it as far as it is now, and happy to have this resolution before us of support, and it's just really perfect timing now to bring the past and the future together as we're looking at the prison redevelopment and that whole area, and knowing that the city will be making a substantial development along with private developers that will soon be investing in that site, and so it really makes sense to put it there and right on the river, and you think about the river and all that happened there, and yes, you're exactly right, it has to be here, and appreciate your efforts. So are there any questions of council for Mr. Pretty? All right. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 201833?
Second.
Any further discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Abstain.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Pretty.
Thank you.
Appreciate your effort, and good luck, and we'll definitely do our part to spread the message of how important this would be for our city. So, thank you. In fact, I think we should get a picture. Come on up here, and let's get a picture together, and we're going to share it, and if council would want to come up behind me. It's not that often, Bob.
Why is this not unexperienced?
all of our committee meetings at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Do we have any committee announcements this evening? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, the Administration Committee has been canceled for this month. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other committee reports? Okay, and I'll have my reports this evening. I want to talk about Jefferson City Reads, which is from the public schools. There's J.C. Reads Day coming up this Friday, March 8th, at 9:30 a.m. Do we have anyone here this evening from the schools? Okay. So Jefferson City Public Schools Libraries has designated 9:30 a.m. on March 8th as a 20-minute drop everything and read time across the community. So D E A R, drop everything and read. So I hope that council will all participate in some way. This Friday, I'll be attending two schools. I'll be going to Thorpe Gordon along with the First Lady of Missouri, Governor Parsons' wife, Teresa, and I will be going to Thorpe Gordon and, actually, no, Melanie from Thorpe Gordon was going to be here. We're going to Cedar Hill and West School. So we're going to two schools on Friday, but certainly all the schools are asking for readers. If anybody's interested, I'm sure they would love to have you, and so that is this Friday, Jefferson City Reads Day, and they will be celebrating in schools across the district. Hope that you will join us wherever you are, so in your social media, be sure to tag hashtag J.C. Reads and hashtag J.C. Stronger Together. So J.C. Reads Week is this week, March 4th through 8th, and on the 8th, on Friday, they'll finalize that, so I hope everybody participates in that in their own way. And item B, under my announcements, is the bicentennial, Missouri bicentennial moment. So at this time, I'll highlight the My Missouri 2021 Photograph Project, Photography Project. So if you go to Missouri2021.org, you can find information about that. So last week, we talked about the school penny drive, and this year, or this week, it's the Photography Project, so we hope everybody tunes into that for the bicentennial at Missouri 2021. And Mr. Sanders, you have an announcement for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is working on their Camp Oak 2045 and Beyond Plan. We're going to have an open house on March 19th at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. The plan will present four development land use scenarios, which would identify congestion and growth issues for each of those, and we invite the public and everybody to come attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council announcements? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative Update, Ms. Carolyn Winjarro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council as a whole. Excuse me. It's midterm, midterms are on. It's just horrible, but it's fun. And next week, we're going to be going on spring break, so Lincoln University students will be going home all of next week, but Lincoln University will be open, as well as our track team will be going to Nationals. I believe they leave tomorrow morning or Thursday morning, I'm not quite sure, and we'll be cheering them on as they are away. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, good luck to the track team. Yes, Councilman Graham.
Also, I'd like to announce that the Lincoln University men's basketball team will be playing in the first round of the playoffs Friday at noon in Kansas City, and they will be playing Fort Hayes. So congratulations once again to the Lincoln University men's basketball team for making playoffs again this year as well, too.
Absolutely. Congratulations to them. That's great, great news, and good luck with midterms, Carolyn.
Right.
All right. Item 10, presentations on the gallery, from the gallery on specific bills. We have signed up Mr. Michael Lester on Bill 2018-115. Welcome.
So I'm, I'm asking you to vote in favor of Bill 2018-115, the amendment to the definition of habitual offender, offender of the nuisance ordinance. A group of residents from the south side have been working with city staff for some time, looking at ways to increase compliance with the ordinance to improve the appearance and welfare of our neighborhood. Early in these discussions, we identified problem of official, habitual offender of the nuisance ordinance as a focus. I've lived in my home on Hickory for 17 years, and during that whole time, there's a home several houses down from mine that's been vacant and abandoned, and over that two-decade period, the weeds and grass have grown at will, and every winters, every summer and spring and fall, there's notices posted, and the city eventually abates that property. And apparently, the city abatement charge was never enough to motivate either proactively or retroactively that landlord to do anything about his property, and the definition of habitual offender rendered enforcement under the current definition just inoperable. So unfortunately, there are many properties in our neighborhood and other parts of Jefferson City that have this same problem, and it's just not going to get better unless this habitual offender ordinance definition is corrected. So I urge you to fix the problem, and my understanding that this definition amendment proposed would just do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Sure. Emily will take that. Thank you.
Item 11, consent agenda is their motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduce 2018-107.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by removing parking from the north side of Lee Street between Morrow Drive and High Cliff Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this bill would remove parking on the north side of Lee Street. It's a 20-foot, 25-foot wide street, allows parking on both sides currently, in most, in most cases. This bill would remove that and only allow parking on the north side of the street. It's a residential street. The request came from a resident of the street and went to our Traffic and Transportation Commission where it was discussed, and they recommended approval.
Any questions? Thank you. 2018-108.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by removing parking from the west side of Huff Park Road between Cobb Drive and Carroll Street.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mayor. Another Traffic and Transportation Commission item that was discussed and recommended for approval by the commission, but basically Huff Park is a 30-foot wide street. Right now, there's parking allowed on two sides of the street in this location. It's right adjacent to the school. It's, you'll often find cars parked on both sides of the street, limiting access through there as well. Item was discussed, and the commission recommended approval on one side of the street, on the west side, near the school.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2018-109.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to telecommunications facilities.
Mr. Moleman.
Thank you. This bill relates to new regulations that are required to be passed by the city under HB 1991 related to the deployment of small cell wireless facilities. The ordinance that we have in front of you was drafted based on the model ordinance put out by the Missouri Municipal League to address this issue. Essentially, what this ordinance does, it creates a mechanism to, for the deployment of small wireless facilities primarily in three different areas that are affected. The first area is generally on private property. Co-locations of small cells on existing structures on private property are a permitted use. That's required under state law, and so that is reflected in this ordinance. The second place is within the rights of way. Generally, cities have the ability to control what type of facilities by private, private parties go in the rights of way. HB 1991 approved last year preempts most of that authority for cities to control how these type of facilities are deployed in the rights of way, and so this, this ordinance reflects that preemption and requires that deployment of small cell facilities in the rights of way is, is a permitted use, and so permitted as of right, the city really doesn't have too much ability to control where or how these facilities are deployed. There are some exceptions for safety concerns, you know, with cannot put, the city has the ability to control them where a location would be detrimental to public safety, but that's really kind of our remaining authority for these type of facilities in the rights of way. And then the final area that we are able to exercise some control is deployment of these facilities in historic districts and single-family districts. If the council remembers, last year, we approved legislation creating the National Historic Overlay District, which zoned our national historic areas as, as historic, which is required, which is the triggering event under the, under HB 1991. And because we, because we did that, and we did that by August 28th of last year, we are able to impose a zoning process on deployments of small, small cells, which are either new poles or what's called modification of existing facilities, which are substantial expansions of existing facilities. So in those two situations, where there's either a new pole or a modification to an existing, to an existing pole or other facility, the city can require that those deployments obtain a special exception permit by this, from the city council. And so we are able to work with the wireless companies to ensure that deployment of this technology in our historic areas does not, or attempts to mitigate the negative impacts to our historic areas. It's a fairly complicated bill, but it is based on the model, model ordinances that are, were put out by the Municipal League. If there's any specific questions, I'd like to, I'd be happy to get into that with you, but we might be able to get into some more specifics at our next reading after the public hearing if there's any additional questions.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three, item 2018-110, 111, and 112, we'll take all of those three up together. So Mrs. Donaldson will read the three.
2018-110, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Capital City High School subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri. 2018-111, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing sanitary sewer easements over portions of property located in Capital City High School subdivision. 2018-112, an ordinance amending Section 19-401, Streets and Highways Schedule J, Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to Cavalier Drive located in Capital City High School subdivision.
And Mr. Sanders and Mr. Marash will give us a summary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first one, 2018-110, is a standard ordinance approving and accepting a final subdivision plat. The property, I believe- The property, I believe everybody's familiar with, it's just north of St. Mary's Hospital at the intersection of Mission Drive and 179. It's a hundred and ten acres. The subdivision plat will create two lots, one where the high school is currently being developed and one east of that across from Cavalier Drive. There's also a reserve tract to the north, which is going to include a buffer yard and stormwater facilities and things like that. The acceptance of the subdivision plat also gives the city a right of way for two streets. There's also two companion bills with this that Mr. Marash will discuss here in a minute. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Oh, excuse me. Planning and zoning commission is recommending this for approval unanimously, eight to zero.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Marash.
And the next two are fairly straightforward. I think they've highlighted them there, but basically they, it's a property cleanup issue. They've relocated some sewer, so this would remove the, or vacate the sewer easements that are no longer needed.
Councilman Mahalovich.
Two questions with regard to the Cavalier Drive. Will there be sidewalks on both sides?
I believe there's sidewalk on one side, if I recall. It's already built, but am I wrong in that?
No, Mr. Marash is correct. There is going to be a sidewalk the whole length on the west side. There will be a crosswalk right there where the future Cathedral Park Road is going to be built, so you can have access to the existing trail to the north. I believe that's a right.
Yeah. I, I just couldn't recall when you asked me that. They've already constructed them. It's on the one side and then the sidewalk connection that goes across actually goes into the subdivision there. Shown on the, on the upper right-hand corner, there's a dead-end street there with the turnaround and to allow those people direct access to that road, you know, pedestrian access, there's a sidewalk connection that goes over to that roadway.
Then follow-up. Was the request to prevent parking made by the high school?
No, they didn't comment on it. I think it was part of the development agreement, actually, originally discussions. I don't know sure, sure if it made it in or not, but typically something like this, there's no parking allowed now on Creek Trail. There's no parking allowed on Mission Drive. So this is kind of completes that loop there and it's built to a width, I believe, around thirty-two feet. One could park on that, but have two narrow lanes, but we prefer to start this way. A lot of times when we do new plats, we try to go ahead and set these parking restrictions such that if, in the future, if somebody want to come back and ask for something different instead of us trying to take something away.
Thank you.
Councilman Graham.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So Cavalier Drive, is that a drive that's going to take someone past the school or into the school? Which one is it? Both?
It'll come out of the roundabout. You see the roundabout on the lower portion of the screen. So one leg of the roundabout goes to, is Cavalier Drive and it goes all the way down to Creek Trail. So anybody would be able to use that. There are some driveways off of it that go into the parking lots, as you can see from that photo, but I think there's one, two, three entrances shown there. The other leg of the roundabout goes just directly into the school property and other parking lots.
So this would be a city-owned street or?
City-owned street.
A street that's eventually turned over to the high school or just?
No, this is a city-owned street. This is what the city invested 1.5 million, almost 1.5 million to get this street built and completes our master plan loop. That way, the good circulation around through this area, including your neighborhood, can get up and go different places then.
If I may clarify also, the, the other leg of the roundabout that's going into the school, that loops around the school, that is a school road. That is not a city street.
So that would be taken care of, plowed and all that by the school?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's the street I was talking about then.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. 2018-113, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Ridgecrest subdivision, Section 2, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance would basically approve and accept the Ridgecrest subdivision plat. There's two tracks, excuse me, there's one lot, about three and a half acres. It's located on the corner of Edgewood and Stadium. There is a reserve tract associated with this up there where the, the road intersects. The reason for that, Mr. Moleman will probably get into more detail, but that is to provide for any sort of future intersection improvements as, as part of that area develops. It's gone through planning and zoning. Once again, it's being recommended for approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. 2018-114.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with S&amp;K Real Property Holdings LLC.
Mr. Moleman.
Thank you. This ordinance approves a development agreement with S&amp;K Real Property Holdings LLC. What this redevelopment agreement does, it secures reserve tract identified by Sunny on the previous plat for conveyance to the city for future intersection improvements. In exchange for, for that property, the development agreement relieves the property owner of their obligation to construct a sidewalk along Stadium Boulevard and Edgewood Drive is anticipated with the future intersection improvements that, that would be, sidewalks would be installed as part of that improvement project. And so it was agreed at a staff level that requiring the owner to install sidewalks, which would then get torn up and replaced with a future city project, made some sense to not, not require them to build those sidewalks in the first instance. Also, the property developer is going to grade that reserve tract down to the street level and then build a retaining wall. And the retaining wall will be built on private property and maintained by the property owner. And then in the event that the intersection improvement at Stadium and Edgewood is a roundabout, the property developer wanted the, essentially the first shot at sponsoring the, sponsoring the roundabout interior for decorative purposes. So there's something in there that if, if that opportunity becomes available, that, that the property owner would have one year in order to take advantage of that and actually enter into another agreement with the city for, for adoption and maintenance of that roundabout interior. So essentially what we're looking at is exchange, or receiving of land by the city in exchange for primarily the, 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 the release of the obligation to build sidewalks is really the, the crux of the agreement.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2018-115.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 18, Article 8, the definition of habitual offenders.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance would amend the habitual offender code in Chapter 18. Currently, to be declared an habitual offender, you have to be convicted of violation under several sections of the city code, Chapters 21, 8, and 5, or been ordered to abate a code violation after a hearing. This would basically allow for a abatement to account as, as one of those occurrences that count up to three different infractions over the course of 365 days or five over 720 days. It's just another tool that, that we can use to, to help address property maintenance issues. The benefit of being declared an habitual offender is that, and I'm probably going to get the wording wrong on this, but the, the court cannot suspend, let me just read it here real quick, not suspend imposition of a sentence nor suspend execution of a sentence. So basically then there'd be a $350 fine and there's some conditions on, on probation and things like that. Mr. Moleman could probably explain that a little bit more in detail. This came out of Public Works and Planning and as Mr. Lester said, probably a lot better than I am right now, it would help address some of those issues that, that we have out there. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. 2018-116.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $124,110 agreement with Tyler Technologies New World for the upgrade of software used in the 911 center at the police department.
Lieutenant Steeferman.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an upgrade to our current computer-aided dispatching software that we use in our 911 center. Tyler Technologies has, they announced several years ago that they were going to stop supporting the current version of CAD that we're on, which is an MSP, they call it MSP version, so old CAD. So the new upgrade is rewrite of that entire software package. So it's, it's a little more than just a standard upgrade or enhancement. This is a full install of a brand-new CAD client, which they're, they're going to. They've already stopped doing any enhancements on the current CAD projects, so we're stuck with what we have. And, but they did extend their customer support out for an additional year to allow customers to transition over to their new product. So without doing this, we would be stuck with an unsupported CAD software program moving forward. So moving forward with this project gets us up to date with our current software vendor and gives us increased and enhanced abilities with our computer-aided dispatching software to be compatible with new and emerging technologies in the computer worlds that would give us enhanced dispatching, mapping, just like Uber where that driver knows exactly where you're standing at. It gives us those kinds of abilities to be able to track things going on in the city better.
All right. Any questions?
I have a question for Chief.
Councilman Graham.
Uh, Chief, I guess these funds have already been identified through what sources?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
The $124,110 have been identified through what sources?
Yes, sir. Yes, that was a part of our original sales tax G plan, so that is our, those are our resources for this project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Lieutenant Steeferman. And Chief, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
No, this is very important. We've, we've spent about two and a half years working to this end and we're very pleased, excited about what this provides. We just want to emphasize it's an upgrade of the existing system that we presently have.
Okay, great. Any further questions? Councilman Mahalovich.
I see there are several requirements for the installation and I assume we had to do quite a bit of upgrading of equipment prior to even allow for it. Hundred megabit service it asked for and maybe even a thousand megabit, I think it said.
Yeah, we have a, so leading up to the, the past two and a half years, leading up to getting ready to install the implementation of this software, we did work with the IT department and they worked directly with Tyler Technologies to make sure that we purchased all of the appropriate hardware to be able to not only support the computer-aided dispatch upgrade, but here in the next year or two, we're going to be coming in front of the council again because they're doing the same thing with our records management software. So when we purchased the hardware through the IT department, we made sure that the hardware purchase would not only support this upgrade, but the next upgrade and future growth within the department and needs that we'll have there.
I'm not sure if I understand the reoccurring costs. They seem fairly low, but, but I would expect it to be almost 20% of the, or 10% of the purchase cost. So it looks like it's not much more than $3,000, though. Do you know what it is? And will it, will the reoccurring cost, is it already something we do each year anyway? If, under this existing software, we're supplanting this new products at that budget line item?
Yeah, the recurring cost is something that we do every year. That's our annual maintenance and support for when we, when we call their help desk, they answer and give us support. And then on top of that, that, that number is low because that's showing you all the maintenance. What's not included in that, that we do currently pay them is all the licensing fees to be able to install it on all of the computers. And I don't have the exact numbers on what we pay yearly in licensing, but that is just the maintenance support for the software package.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
2018-117.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adding a new article governing the permitting and care of community cats.
Chief Schrader.
Thank you, Mayor. This entitled Community Cats, it's really, it's about our feral cats in our community and we know we have certain issues with those. And this, as I said in the pre-meeting, the genesis of this bill is the, it was twofold. One, Dr. Thiel is our staff veterinarian and secondly, the three veterinarians that serve on our advisory board in our animal control program, all supported and really were a part of creating the substance of this bill. And so we brought Dr. Thiel with us tonight to, she is best able to be able to share with you the purposes of it and what we hope to achieve by enacting this. And so I'd like to defer to Dr. Jessica Thiel.
Welcome.
Thank you. So this community cat ordinance recognizes a population of community cats and identifies management practices that have been shown to successfully decrease their populations, decrease nuisance complaints over time. By definition, community cats are unowned cats in the community. So often people will put out food or shelter for them, which gives them the resources they need to reproduce, which they do. And those kittens and unwanted cats not only overrun our shelter in the spring through fall, our resources are generally overwhelmed in those times by the kittens that we get in, but they also cause nuisances to the citizens. Mating behaviors, fighting, spraying, or just their presence can be considered a nuisance by, by certain individuals. The method that has been shown to successfully manage this population of cats is called TNR, which stands for trapped, neutered, released. Under this program, cats are trapped, they are taken to a veterinarian where they're spayed or neutered, vaccinated for rabies, ear tipped, so the quarter inch of their left ear is removed, which identifies them as having been spayed or neutered and vaccinated for rabies. And then those cats are taken back to their original location. And so the, the point of that is to stabilize that population so that they're no longer reproducing and growing and creating those unwanted animals. It's also to ensure public health, so we want to make sure that those cats are vaccinated for rabies. Cats are the most common domestic species to carry rabies, so making sure that they are vaccinated creates a buffer for public health reasons between wildlife and people. Alternatives to TNR, which have been used and proposed, include trap and euthanize, where cats are, where they're unwanted, they're trapped, they're rounded up and then euthanized. Other, another method is, that's been considered is relocation. So these cats are unwanted in the areas that they're at, they can just maybe be relocated to another area. Both of these methods have been shown to not be successful because of something called the vacuum effect. What happens there is that because cats are removed from an area where resources are present, more cats will come in to take advantage of those resources. And those cats are oftentimes not spayed and neutered, so then the problem continues. The efforts of trap and euthanize and relocation are also very resource-intensive and require year after year, doing the same thing over and over again, whereas TNR, once you get a population stabilized, the amount of resources you have to invest decreases over time. So what we're trying to achieve with this is reduction and hopefully eventual elimination of this population of unwanted cats, as well as improve the public health of this community. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich.
It seemed to me there was a volunteer group that was doing this. Did they cease doing that?
No. Wild Things has been performing TNR in the community for about nine years now. And we have seen an effect at the shelter. In 2013, the number of feral cats that were euthanized was 221 and it's dropped every year. It's stabilized over the past couple of years, but last year we were down to 58. So we have seen the effects at our shelter and there are countless studies out there that do show its effectiveness at decreasing the number of cats and feral cats.
So if this private group, are they ceased doing that or are they continuing to do?
They're, they're continuing to do that, yeah.
And so why would we, I understand it takes, is it about $75 per, per cat or thereabouts?
So the idea here is that the caretakers would be responsible for ensuring that the cats that they're overseeing are spayed and neutered, whether that's taking advantage of the Wild Things group or through a private veterinarian. There's a lot of low-cost spay-neuter options out there right now. So there are different venues that a caretaker may be able to take advantage of to, to get, you know, their collar. you know, their colony sterilized.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought we, we were going to be performing those and as a cost to the city?
No, no, not necessarily.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. The other thing is this, this bill was already, I mean, this bill was already heard by the animal advisory and public safety several months ago. Why are we just now coming to us?
Yeah, so we, the advisory board heard it and then we took it in front of the public safety committee. And I think it was just merely an oversight from us at the police department to get the bill summary written and presented to the council. It was our intent when we talked, brought it to the public safety committee initially to get it brought to the council and it just, by circumstances, kind of got lost in the paper shuffle and that's why we got it here now.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ward?
So the caretakers, where do they register to become a caretaker, to get their permit?
They would register through the animal control department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
2018-118.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general revenue fund.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And there's also indicated on this bill, a request to suspend the rules and approve the bill tonight. The, basically the city's salt, salt chemicals are used to treat roadways are running low after several, these several weather events. We did request from the city administrator, the ability to use some emergency procedures to get our order in place. So once we place the order, you kind of have to get in line and wait. But we are running low. We had about 1,500 tons when I wrote that memo about a week ago. We're down to probably around 1,000 now. Just an average storm can use a couple hundred tons. We've had events where we used 1,000 tons of salt and chemical. But basically, this request is for another $130,000 in chemical funds. That would, and I told you across the hall slightly wrong, it gets us about 1,500 tons. I said 2,000 across the hall. So that'd allow us to get another 1,500 tons on hand and get close to filling back up. It wouldn't be quite full, but be close. And we'd feel comfortable moving forward through the rest of the winter season. We do have a long-range forecast where they are forecasting colder and average temperatures for the next several, couple of weeks anyway.
Councilman Prather?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules tonight to have a third reading.
Okay, we've had a request to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll have third reading of 2018-118.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general revenue fund.
Any further discussion? Roll call, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank staff for a fantastic job taking care of our roads this winter. It's been, my understanding is a harsher than, than normal winter and a tougher than normal job. And I get nothing but glowing remarks from my neighbors after these storms. So just sincere job well done to you and your whole team.
Yeah, I'll pass that along, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Mahalovic?
Since I see Frank Reisik in the room, who's the chair of our airport advisory committee, we learned today that we applied over nearly 12 tons of chemicals on over 17 events at the airport. And the pilots were very complimentary of our, our management of the airport and they're, they're trying to get into other airports and were not able to fly at our Jefferson City because they feel that not many, not as many airports are cared for as well as ours. So it's a compliment not only to the folks in, in the city, but also on the runways across the river. And I would also add that we have a huge responsibility, both fire, police, and, and road crews, to, to care for 40,000 visitors that come work in the city each day. And, and it's, it's fair to say, if you get off the roads and let them do their work for a period of time, we're open for business as a city. And I think that's a strong commitment to the state of Missouri and a strong commitment to our commerce. So thank you again.
Pass that along, thank you.
Absolutely, great comments, Councilman Mahalovic and Hensley. Thank you. All right, roll call please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. And hopefully we can use some reverse psychology now that we are buying this, that we're not going to need it, right? Let's hope, okay. Bill's pending, 2018-105.
An ordinance amending section 19-9 reimbursement rates and rules of the personnel policy manual.
Mrs. Stroke? Thank you. So this ordinance amends the personnel policy manual regarding per diems or reimbursement of meals while an employee is traveling on city business. And there's actually two changes included. The first change increases the meals per diem from $36 per day to $50 per day. Those are broken down by amounts for each meal. The current rates were established in the year 2000 and the, the new mount reflects the federal rates. I mentioned next door about the state rate and I, I stand corrected. So the federal rate is, standard rate is $50. Lincoln University's standard rate is $51. The state of Missouri's standard rate is actually $34 per day. And then the city of Columbia uses the federal rate, so their standard rate would also be $50. So these amounts really reflect what most of the other organizations have gone to. The second change in the ordinance just adds language to comply with IRS regulations regarding an overnight stay. And that was actually what prompted the ordinance change in the first place. So staff supports approval of these changes and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, roll call please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2018-106.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the park fund.
Mr. Spalding?
Thank you, Mayor. This is to ask for approval for a supplemental appropriation out of our fund balance of $1,600,000 to purchase the equipment directly for the complete creation of the community park. About $900,000 of this will go towards play equipment, spray ground equipment, and the safety surfacing for that equipment. About $700,000 will go for the shelters, furniture, safety lighting, and sculptures that will be part of this park. The commission did also approve this at their February commission meeting.
Thank you, any questions? Councilman Mahalovic?
Sorry. I think it's worth the public knowing the total amount invested. And was there some private dollars associated with this project as well?
Yes, the total amount of the, the park, because it is a creation of a new park, it's $2.9 million total. That's new utilities, roadways, parking and everything. There was a group, the Jefferson City Art Foundation, that is putting about $65,000 to $70,000 into this for the creation, specifically of the, of the spray ground, which will be our first here in Jefferson City.
Any other questions? Councilman Graham?
And Todd, can you also, if you have this information, tell us, I know you guys did a study of the number of people that the different parks touches. Could you give us those numbers so that we can see the impact?
Sure.
For the numbers for the community park?
That was really the, the driving force in this. When we started our master plan process, it became very apparent that community park was the, the park that needed the most attention because it was in our community, the, the closest, the highest population base around that within a 10-minute walk, basically. It's 11,000 people that could get to that park within a 10-minute walk and we hadn't made improvements there for quite some time. And it's our goal, I think, to be a progressive community, especially in the area of parks, is to get all of our community to a park in 10 minutes. So that was the driving force. And it's by far our most highly populated area.
Thank you.
Yes.
Further questions? Roll call please.
Hussey? Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, nothing on the informal. Item 15, resolutions we've taken up, 2018-33, 2018-34.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a rights-of-way use agreement with Missouri Network Alliance LLC.
Mr. Moleman?
Thank you. This resolution approves an agreement with Missouri Network Alliance LLC, who, who does business as Bluebird Networks. This will allow Bluebird to, it provides consent to Blue, to Bluebird to install their communications facilities in the city rights-of-way. And so the idea is that generally, these types of installations in, in city rights-of-way are done through a, a permissive right-of-use agreement, which is, are, which are approved by the city council on a project-by-project basis. This agreement would provide general consent to Bluebird to install their facilities in the rights-of-way. And then for individual projects, when they're ready to make those installations, they would then obtain a right-of-way permit, excavation permit from Public Works to actually make the installation. And so it's kind of tidying up the, the overall legal terms at the beginning and then dealing with the installations on a project-by-project basis as those projects come along. Bluebird's primary business is fiber optics and their focus is on institutional users, so schools, libraries, hospitals, those are their big clients. And so they have a, I believe, a five-phase rollout program of covering a substantial part of the city with fiber optics to provide a high-speed broadband internet service.
Thank you, any questions? Is there a motion to approve 2018-34? Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Resolution passes. Nothing under item 16, presentations from the gallery. Item 17, any council and staff discussions of presentation topics? Item 18, we have a motion, or I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
And Mrs. Donaldson will read the motion.
Pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following: sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, and sealed proposals and related documents, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mahalovic?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Yep.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, so we are now in closed session. So thank you all for being here this evening and we'll just have the closed session here in this room. Thank you.